Counsel meeting, April 6, 2015. Is there anything to report, counsel?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. In the litigation of the City of Crescent City versus Low Jerky, which is the code enforcement action with respect to the Gardenia Hotel motel, there has been a settlement and the settlement has been approved by Judge McElfrish and has become a court order. And that court order provides that the hotel may be sold to a limited liability company that will purchase it at a price that's approved in the settlement and court order. Out of the proceeds of that settlement, the city will receive reimbursement for its attorney's fees. And effectively, the code enforcement project was at no cost to the City of Crescent City, no net cost. The amount of that reimbursement will be $105,000. The receiver that was appointed to assist in cleaning up the property and getting it sold will receive $110,000 as expenses. And there are some other miscellaneous allocations, including the owner of the property will actually receive some net costs out of it, or some net funding out of it. But of significance is the fact that back taxes will be paid. And the public agencies that we're familiar with as tax recipients, including, on a small scale, the city, but significantly, the school district and the county, will all receive funds as part of this process of sale and repayment of back taxes. So I think we're all hopeful that this property will be back in play economically as a cleaned-up and viable motel fairly soon. And it's yet another successful code enforcement process for the city.
Thank you. It's always good to hear. Okay, we'll take a roll, please.
Counsel member Hawley?
Here.
Counsel member Ensor?
Here.
Counsel member Murray?
Here.
Pro Temenia?
Here.
Mayor Gasnow?
Here. And counsel member Murray will lead us to the pledge of allegiance.
Salute and pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Before we get on to our first thing, our acknowledgement on item one, we had some sad news for the city. Our groundskeeper since 1979, who retired recently, Roger Buckskin, he passed away this last week. And a note from his peers, "Roger seemed to bring a smile to everyone he came into contact with. He was close to employees of the city, always going to the city yard, even after retirement, to visit and play cribbage at lunchtime. There were times Roger would see city crews out in the field and would bring them ice cream or doughnuts. The crew had fun being picked on by Raj and picking on him. He will truly be missed and have a special place in our hearts." And so we want to do a moment of silence for Roger Buckskin, who worked for the city for, oh, he was there for, what, 30 years? 30 years. So, moment of silence for Roger Buckskin. Okay, thank you very much. He will be missed by his peers. Okay. First on our agenda is acknowledgements. An acknowledgement of April 2, 2015, as Sexual Assault Awareness Month. Representative from the North Coast Rape Crisis Team received this acknowledgement. Come on forward to the podium, and I will read this acknowledgement, and I'll bring it, oops, excuse me, bring it down to you. Okay, let's see. Okay, "City of Crescent City acknowledgement, whereas sexualized violence affects children, youth, adults, and elders of all genders from all racial, cultural, and economic backgrounds with public health and social justice implications for every person in Crescent City. And whereas it is estimated that one in three girls and one in seven boys will be sexually victimized by age 18. And whereas staff and volunteers of the North Coast Rape Crisis Team provide 24-hour services to survivors and their significant others to support those impacted, improve responses, and ensure that survivors are not re-victimized. And whereas the North Coast Rape Crisis Team partners with county, tribal, and community-based organizations to promote best-practice responses and community awareness, including participating in multidisciplinary teams such as Sexual Assault Response Team, as well as collaboratives such as Intertribal Women's Advocacy Network and Domestic Violence Task Force. Whereas the North Coast Rape Crisis Team provides prevention, education, self-defense, and awareness-raising programs, encouraging every person to participate in ending sexualized violence and promoting social justice. Now therefore, the City Council of Crescent City hereby designates April 2,015 as Sexual Assault Awareness Month, and is doing so reaffirms its commitment to the North Coast Rape Crisis Team and its vision, a world without violence." Signed, Mayor Broadgast now. You guys want to say a few words?
Yes, please.
Go ahead.
So, hi, my name is Esther, and this is my teammate.
Liz.
And we're with North Coast Rape Crisis Team. We'd like to thank the council for once again recognizing April as Sexual Assault Awareness and Child Abuse Prevention Month. We do work each day very hard to provide a 24-hour free and confidential services to people of all ages, all genders, and circumstances who have been impacted by this violence. We believe that violence is a choice, that no one deserves to be hurt, and as a community, we can all work together to provide safety and accountability. To those ends, we participate in a variety of collaborations and multidisciplinary teams with other communities, governmental, and tribal organizations.
We also strive to raise awareness, providing prevention education in the community. We do this by providing a wide range of violence prevention programs for children, teens, and adults throughout the year. We raise, we also raise awareness through such events as are listed on the handouts that we gave you. We do want to note specifically Jeans for Justice, which happens April 22. There's also a blurb that explains what that's about. We want to encourage your participation, and we appreciate your support. With you as our community partners, we truly can work towards our vision, a world without violence."
Thank you. We appreciate everything you guys do.
Thank you.
Any counsel comments? No? All right. Okay, we're going to go on to our consent calendar. And before I read all this, we're going to pull number five off the consent calendar, which was to authorize the city manager to sign incorrectly a statement allowing California Marine Sanctuary Foundation to display informational signage pertaining to the California Marine Protection Act near the Cultural Center. So we're going to pull that one. But, we're going to go through two, three, four, six, and seven, and eight, nine, and I have to read these.
Yes, sir.
Actually, if you can just read in the corrected language on that, and you can leave
it on the consent.
Well, let's do that, then. I like that idea, that's a great idea. We'll go with that one. Okay, so we're going to leave five in, and I'm going to read in the correct language on number five. Okay, consent calendar. Approval of the regular meeting minutes from the March 16, 2015 council meeting. Receive and file the warrant claims list for the period March 7, 2015 through March 27, 2015. Receive and file the bi-weekly payroll report for the periods ending March 21, 2015, paid on March 27, 2015. Authorize the city manager sign a memorandum of understanding allowing the California Marine Sanctuary Foundation to display informational signage pertaining to the California Marine Protection Act near the Cultural Center. Authorize the city manager to sign an agreement with Freshwater Environmental Services in the amount of $12,460 for wastewater pretreatment program support. Authorize the city manager sign two Shoreline RV Park renovation project contract change orders, CCOs. CCO number one, log removal, installation of pressure sewer and trench widening in the amount of $22,398. And CCO number two, installation of satellite cable TV, wifi conduit system in the amount of $26,962.16. Approve Delnort County Board of Supervisors' appointment of Craig Strong to the Delnort Solid Waste Task Force. Receive and approve an action plan for the extension of interim urgency zoning ordinance number 780 of the City of Crescent City. The City Council of the City of Crescent City placing a temporary prohibition on the establishment of tobacco retailers and off-site sale alcoholic beverage retailers. Okay, is there any public comment on the consent calendar? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to counsel. Do I have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent calendar with the amendment, and just make a comment on item number five, the California Marine Sanctuary Foundation. This is really an important issue, not just here locally, but internationally as well. There was a really interesting article, it was the 10 questions at the Back of Time magazine on September 25 of last year with Sylvia Earle, she's a marine biologist, talking about what's happening with our oceans, and this is just one small step that we can do here locally to protect our oceans.
All right, thank you. We have a motion. Do I have a second? I'll second that motion. All right. Could you please pull the vote?
Counsel member Hawley?
Yes.
Counsel member Ensor?
Yes.
Counsel member Murray?
Yes.
Pro Temenia?
Yes.
Mayor Gasnow?
Yes, thank you. Okay. On to our next thing on the agenda, reports and presentations. We get a presentation of the planned North Coast Tsunami Center to be located in the Crescent City Harbor District. Mr. Palazzo?
I'd like to introduce Mr. Helms from the Harbor District, Executive Director, and also Kimmy Scott, who's going to help do this presentation as well. There's a lot of interconnectivity with a lot of projects that the city is involved with, and we like to kind of show that during this presentation.
All right, thank you. Mr. Helms?
Good evening, and thank you, council members, for giving me the time to show you something that we'd like to see happen at the harbor, but really want to get input from all of you in the community to see what you think about it. And if you do like it, to give us some ideas about what we can do to make it an outstanding, an outstanding facility. Okay, now I'm going to try and multitask and change the slides. There we are. Not that it's very difficult, but, you know, as you know, here in Crescent City, we're known for being pretty much a tsunami center on the west coast of the United States. Thirty-seven recorded tsunamis since 1933, and I know many of the folks around here and their families were here for the '64 tsunami, and we're just recovering in the harbor from the 2011 tsunami. So they're part of what makes this community unique and really draws attention to it. And I went in reverse. Let's move forward. Okay, so what we'd like to do is put up what we're temporarily calling the North Coast Tsunami Center, and we'd like it to be right at Highway 101 and Citizens Dock Road, so it's great visibility, it's easy to get to. And what we want to do, we want to have it as an educational and environmental center where people can get in, get involved, and find out about tsunamis. I can't tell you anecdotally how many people have asked me, visitors coming through the harbor, about, can you tell me about what happened in '64 and where was it? So there's a lot of natural interest in it, and we'd like to have people get in there, get excited, learn about it. And with sea level rise being noted everywhere, there'll be a lot of other areas that actually will be affected by tsunamis in the future. We want it to be fun. We want people to go in there and learn. We don't want it to be like, stand there and go, oh, that's what happened. We want people to get involved so that they bring it home with them, they bring home the knowledge, and it means something to them. So we want to have, on the first floor of this building, and it's going to be, I guess, technically a three-story building, it'll be elevated on pilings that are interlocked to get it up above at least a 50-year tsunami level. I'm waiting to get some data back from NOAA to see how high it would have to be to be above the 100-year tsunami level. Don't know about that yet, but we do want to have it on pilings, we do want to have the pilings interlocked. FEMA and Homeland Security actually have gone through a lot of studies about this. We're basing a lot of this on the FEMA studies of 2009, on how to make a building that will withstand a tsunami. The first floor of it would be the museum, a gift shop, a coffee shop. And that's where some of these would be. You'd have your interactive exhibits. The key to the whole thing is going to be a 3D, 4D theater, a 4D, 8-seat theater, where you not only have the 3D lenses, but you've got the 4D chairs that move, the leg bumpers, the wind. You could also get water, but my wife advised me, women wear makeup, Charlie, you don't want to have water spraying on people's faces. That's the kind of input I need to get from people to make sure we don't make any missteps. But we want to offer people an experience that they can bring home and get excited about. And these would, this would be about a 12-minute film that would let people know, this is what a tsunami is like. And we have a lot of great footage from right here, and a lot of great footage from inside the harbor. As I said before, we'd also plan to have a little coffee café shop, so people can stay and look in around the harbor, enjoy the harbor, have a gift shop on the second floor, which is actually the third floor. We'd have meeting rooms in the harbor offices, but since this building is being designed to be a vertical evacuation site, you know, if you can't get away, we want you to get up and get out of the way of a tsunami, the third floor in the meeting rooms would provide shelter in place for people escaping the tsunami. And, you know, we want to have emergency supplies there, and it's very early in the process, but I want to get with the Red Cross and see how much space do you need, and all the things that they're expert in in disaster, so that we could have them right here, so we can have a true vertical evacuation site and a shelter-in-place site. We'd also have some of the harbor offices up there, and, like I said, it's a nice, it's a nice view, and we'd like to have some people come by and enjoy it. And, like I said, it's engineered to resist a 50-year tsunami event the way it is now. We've talked about the vertical evacuation, and there is roughly the spot where we would like to have it constructed, right along Highway 101. And it would tie in with the rebuilt harbor. And there are just so many neat things we can have there for people to learn about. Now, inside the center, there's Survival Capsule LLC, they make two people survival capsules, they're marketing them in Japan. I'd like to have one of those on the floor so people can try it. They make a 10-person capsule that I'd love to have tethered outside, that actually is set up, you can survive for five days in it. It has solar power, it has an eper, you know, emergency position indicating radio beacon, it's tethered to the ground, but if the water should overtop it, the tether cuts loose, and it's actually a small survival boat. I mean, they're just a number of great things. NOAA has offered to loan us their tsunami boat that they have down at their weather center in Eureka at Woodley Island. I mean, a lot of people are excited about it, and we've just started talking about it, so I hope we keep that going. And for us, it's getting, it's really working with the city and the community to develop that crescent, and we want a crescent of interest. And I'm going to let Kimmy Scott come up and talk about the rest.
Thank you, Charlie. Mayor Gasnow and the council, good evening. So that's what we're talking about here, is a symbiotic relationship between the city and the harbor, to keep doing all the great things that we want to do together to develop this community. So, as he mentioned, this is part of the development of the crescent that we are really known for, and so some of those things that you're familiar with, with us, for instance, the tsunami kiosk that was just dedicated last weekend. We have a lot of components right there along that beachfront property that will interest people when they come here. So what Mr. Helms is talking about is creating another interest. The tsunami kiosk walking tour, it's just launched with those eight kiosks that discuss the history and its education and its history for our residents and our visitors. We've got Shoreline RV currently underway with complete reconstruction. We're hoping that will reopen around May of this year. Now will be right between the beachfront park area and the harbor. The beachfront park area that we've been discussing a lot here lately with the different components, we would like to see developed. This Wednesday night, we've got the dog park meeting for anybody listening out there at the wastewater treatment plant at 5:30 to 7:00. Other components of that'll include the amphitheater, playing fields, disc golf course, lots of different components there. There we go, the beach access improvements, and our plaza. We're also talking about Front Street, combining the harbor into that beachfront park into our downtown business area. So what this is, is just another sort of brick in the wall for completing the vision of what we're trying to reach for our city, and to bring people in and get them off of Highway 1, get them to stay here for a few days, and really enjoy everything that our community has to offer them. As you can see with Front Street, a lot of these pictures haven't been out lately, we've been so focused on beachfront park, but for the community, it's really going to grab people's attention right there on the corridor and pull them into the interesting parts of our town. So like I said, this is about attracting and keeping visitors here. We should not be working in separate silos, we should all be working together to make these things happen, and this discussion is one of those things. I think that Mr. Helms and the harbor have a great idea to sort of promote some of the things that make Crescent City unique. So with that, I will give it back to you. Charlie?
Thanks. Yeah, so I can go catch up on some of the things I forgot in my nervousness making the presentation, but the center, the way in its configuration now, it's set up to provide 18 full-time equivalent jobs, which is, which is great for our community, and that's almost double what we have at the harbor now. We'd really like to see that injected into our local economy. And what the center will do, and it's mostly an indoor attraction, because I've learned in my year at the harbor, you can't count on planning outdoor events. We will have some outdoor exhibits, but everything can be done indoors. And what this will do will really give people a reason to stay, to go to the center, look at, there's a lot to do. The movies that we have there, we'll be showing the tsunami movie, obviously during tourist season, but this theater also allows you to do ride films, which are short, five-minute films, that take advantage of the 3D, 4D. I mean, they race you through coal mines, they shoot you through outer space. I mean, they're really exciting things, and these are done in the Air and Space Museum in San Diego, and the Oregon Museum of Science and Industry up in Portland, very successful. We want to add things to our full-time residents, too. And in this theater, every year they have different seasonal films that come out. There's a lot of variety that we can put in there so that when it's not prime tourist season and we have the 400,000 people transiting 101, it'll give folks things to do. We priced it looking at what will work for our community. So initially, we're looking at a $12 admission for adults and $8 for children. We also want to have a special residence pass that would give residents of Delnort, Humboldt, Josephine, and Curry Counties a discounted rate, so they could come back in. I mean, I've had people say, gosh, we'd like another place to go with our kids. So this, we really hope will bring in folks, we're not pricing it like the big science centers, but we want, like I said, bring people in, let them go to the hotels, let them go, oh, Ocean World's just up the way, look at beachfront park, look at, I mean, we want to give them a real reason to stay here for a couple of days. So there, it's another destination attraction, and I think I've covered most of that, and nothing's more boring than listening to me read from a slide. So that's the presentation. Thank you for taking the time, and if there are any questions, I'd be glad to try and answer what I could.
Any question?
Well, just kind of a comment and a question. One comment is, when we travel throughout the state, whether it be for our own work or as council persons, there's some confusion about where Crescent City is. But the one common way that people identify where Crescent City is is they say, oh, that's where the tsunami occurred. They're thinking of the '64 tsunami, of course. And so, you know, I can see the interest in doing this. The one question I have, though, really, has to do with the Chamber of Commerce. Has there been discussions with the chamber about being at that facility, or, it just seems, if the whole idea is to be symbiotic, it seems like the chamber, who are the experts in telling people what the other alternatives are for the area, should be credit.
Actually, I've spoken to Jeff, and one of the driving forces behind this is that after the tsunamis, as you know, the harbor had to take out a $5 million loan, which we'll be paying on for the next 40 years to USDA. That's put the harbor in a negative position. And this was really designed, not only to provide an attraction for visitors and for people in the community, it was to bring us up so that we can be in the black continually for decades to come. I'd spoken with Jeff, and if, if the chamber would see it as a benefit, we could allot some space for a chamber kiosk, or whatever the chamber would like to do there. But, like I said, basically, it is, it's an education center for the tsunamis, and I wouldn't expect any mass movement of the chamber from the Cultural Center, nothing like that. This is a standalone. We'd certainly participate or cooperate with other people to get things in there if it would be helpful to them, but that would be about the extent of it. Sure.
Any other comments?
So you hadn't discussed the funding sources to build the facility, so do you have anything in mind, or you're still?
We have a few rough ideas. I first really wanted to get the idea out to the community to see, is this something the community would like to see? Because that's what counts. I mean, I'm a newcomer here, but I love this place, but I need to speak to the people who've been here and have generations here to get their input. Yes, I've gotten some positive feedback from NOAA, because we learned about the vertical evacuation through the FEMA studies and the engineering studies that have been done. Troy Nicolini with NOAA said that he would really like to see us get to the point where he could introduce me to the folks at FEMA, because he believes this would be an outstanding demonstration project, which they would fund, because they have a new study coming out this year in 2015, and that would be my first stop on the funding, the funding tour. I don't know how much it would do. I have a minor interest from another group here, and that would be if we put some space for their interest on the floor. But no, this would be a massive fundraising effort. I've looked at other museums, I've seen contributors to other museums, David and Lucille Packard are folks that I'd gotten money from in the past. So it would be me out basically begging for about $10 million, and taking advice from anyone else who had a lead, so I could then go and follow it up. But no, I didn't want to go, I didn't want to get out too early, I wanted to get support first.
That's always everyone's question, because we have some grand designs for our beachfront park and Front Street, and, but we're still looking for money, so that's always in the back of everyone's mind, so I just threw it out there, because I'm sure people were wondering.
Oh, absolutely, and that's, and that's first and foremost. And like I said, we do have some leads through the federal government, and there's some other California state funding sources associated with tsunamis and emergencies, but then I'd have to, I'd really have to build in around that. But that should get us off the ground and be a fairly substantial contribution, we hope.
Yeah, I can't speak for the rest of the council, but I definitely support tsunami center, so. But if you do need help from the city, please don't hesitate to ask.
Okay. Well, I would like, as we go on a little farther, to assemble an advisory group to help keep us on track and keep the energy up and keep a sharp timetable. It's always good to have some, some folks involved who are really committed to getting it done and not have it just be one person. So I'd appreciate it.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
It's a great concept.
Yep.
Just one more thing, real quick.
Sure.
You know, I'm going to have to ask a harder question.
Yes, sir.
And that is, that when we talked about naming Front Street Tsunami Way, there was a lot of pushback from the community, in that they wondered if we should brand this community as Tsunami Central.
Yes.
But I think the more we live with tsunamis, and the more we address them as a community, it makes sense to have that brand. But I just, I wasn't sure if you were receiving any, any pushback yet.
You know, I've spoken to a number of people, and I've only gotten one comment that echoes that sentiment, going, are you sure you want to do this? Because, you know, it shows we have tsunamis here. And to me, actually, if you look at what Cindy Henderson has done, and, you know, we're getting national recognition for how prepared we are for tsunamis, and you look at what happened, you look at '64, you look where we are today, you look at what happened in the harbor in 2011, that shows you that the tsunamis, it's not a death knell, it's a big challenge, but when a community pulls together, they can overcome it, and overcome it in pretty short order. I think it's a pretty inspirational story myself. But yes, I have had one person say, eh, you know, are you sure you want to publicize it? But if you go to YouTube and you look for Crescent City, that's what you see. So, you know, many marketers would love to be in the position we're in, because we've got something to market right now that's well-known. We don't have to build interest, so.
Maybe we can get the Rickazin Takata boat back.
Well, you know, and that's something I'd like to see there. There's a, there's a sister city right there with the high school people. That's unique. You know, where else does that happen? So.
Thank you. Yeah, and during the dedication of the tsunami kiosk, where it basically does tell about the tsunami and how we about the tsunami and how we came back, living in a tsunami zone, you should be educated. You know, people in the Midwest are in the tornado alley, you know, they're known for tornadoes, and so they have that. And then, of course, California, known for earthquakes. So I think it's a great idea. It's a great idea for our community, and it's another destination and educational thing for not only tourists but for our community as well. So, thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your time. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay. Next on our agenda is Communications, Public Comment Period. Any member of the audience is invited to address the City Council on any matter that is within the jurisdiction of the City of Crescent City. Comments on public interest or on matters appearing on the agenda are accepted. Note, however, that the Council is not able to undertake extended discussion or act on non-agendized items. Such items can be referred to staff for appropriate action, which may include placement on a future agenda. Any comments that are not at the microphone are out of order and will not be part of the public record. After receiving recognition from myself, please state your name and city or county residency. For the record, public comment is limited to three minutes. Is there any public comment? Oh, please.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. I'm Roger Getlin. I live in the city, and I'm here to talk to you tonight about theft. Goes on in our city. Shopping cart theft. $250 a pop theft. It poses a significant drain on our local retailer who provides this convenience for his customers, but many in our community observe walking up and down our streets with these stolen carts, and worse yet, many of these are abandoned, sometimes in the middle of the street. It's blight, and the Council should engage itself in putting a stop to this theft. I ask you, if there were 25 cars a month being stolen from Crescent City, from our various parking lots, would you all be sitting up there so compassionate and understanding for the individuals who steal these automobiles? So I ask you, and again rhetorically, why do you tolerate these carts strewn about our city? I have, and I will continue, to pick up these carts in an effort to assist our local retailers who are hard-pressed in deploying staff and time to retrieve their property. But I urge you to direct our police department to cite those who steal irrespective of political correctness. Removing a shopping cart from its grounds is theft. It's plain and simple. And turning a blind eye and compelling our overburdened businesses to fix this problem all by themselves without city involvement doesn't hold the Council accountable for allowing these crimes to be committed. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? Yes, please.
Melissa Lockwood of Crescent City. I'm with the First Five Family Resource Center, and on behalf of First Five and the Board of Supervisors, I would like to formally invite the City Council members to a private screening of the compelling documentary, The Reason of America. It discusses the state of our early childhood development and education in this country. This screening is going to be happening April 21st here in the boardroom, and I have personalized invitations for each of you. We would really like to see all of the City Council there. We think that this is a very important discussion and conversation that we need to have in this community, and we would love to have your input on that conversation. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? Seeing no other public comment, we'll close public comment, and we will now adjourn to the Housing Authority. Call to order the special meeting on April 6, 2015, of the Housing Authority. We can dispense with roll call, because we're still all here. We have no reports or presentations. Does anybody want to comment publicly about the Housing Authority special meeting? No? So we'll close public comment. And on the consent calendar, we have one item, Adopt Resolution, excuse me, Adopt Resolution Number HA 2015-01, a resolution of the Crescent City Housing Authority approving the submission of the five-year and annual FPH plan for the PHA fiscal year beginning 7/1/2015, authorized chairman to sign Form HUD-50077. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the consent calendar for the Housing Authority.
Second.
All right. Go ahead and pull the vote, please.
Board Member Hawley?
Yes.
Board Member Enscore?
Yes.
Board Member Murray?
Yes.
Vice Chair Nia?
Yes.
Chair Gasnow?
Yes. And since this is a special meeting, we don't have a director's report, no public hearings, no continuing business, no new business. We will adjourn to our next regular scheduled meeting, April 20th, 2015. Now we go on to public hearings. Our first public hearing, on item number 12, is Hold Public Hearing, Waive Full Reading, Read by Title Only, and Adopt Ordinance Number 783, An Extension of Interim Urgency Zoning Ordinance Number 780 of the City Council of the City of Crescent City Placing a Temporary Prohibition on the Establishment of Tobacco Retailers and Off-Site Sell Alcoholic Beverage Retailers. Mr. Palazzo.
Mayor Gasnow, for items 12 through 16, I'd like to introduce Mr. Taylor, Community Development Director, to present these items.
Good evening. So as you'll recall, back in the April 21st, 2014 meeting of the City Council, the Council had adopted Urgency Ordinance 780, which put a temporary prohibition on the establishment of new alcohol and tobacco retailers. Then again, the June 2nd, 2014 meeting of the City Council, the Council approved a 10-month and 15-day extension, as allowed by Government Code 65858. So tonight, as we draw closer to adopting the two ordinances, realize we're also getting close to this urgency ordinance coming up and expiring, which should be on April 20th, 2015. So the timing was off just a little bit for us. Therefore, we're asking for a one-year, a 12-month extension of the urgency ordinance, which is allowed, again, by Government Code Section 65858, just to give us additional time to run the alcohol and tobacco sales ordinances through the process and get them adopted. So this will allow us sufficient time. As you saw on the consent calendar earlier, we did submit an action plan. To date, staff has drafted, put together a draft ordinance that has gone twice to the Planning Commission, and obviously it's gone to the Planning Commission for approval already to send to the City Council. So we estimate if everything goes through with the adoption of the ordinance, that it should take effect roughly two to three months' time. So at that time, if that ordinance, if the two ordinances are adopted, obviously this ordinance will sunset and the other two will take effect. So currently, staff is asking for one last extension of Urgency Ordinance 780, which would be Ordinance 783.
Okay, so we need to do a public hearing on each of these items, but he just addressed all of them from 11 through 16.
No, I just stated that Ms. Taylor will...
Oh, he'll do on each one?
...all the rest, the next five items.
Excellent.
Yeah, so we're just considering the extension of the urgency ordinance at this time.
Okay. Well, I will now open this up to public comment for this public hearing about the extension of the interim urgency zoning ordinance. Is there any public comment? Please.
Hi, Jeff Holsfeldt from the Tobacco Use Prevention Program, and I am not opposed whatsoever to the extension. Mr. Taylor has done such a terrific job, along with the Planning Commission. I know they've worked very hard on this, so not opposed to it at all. Thank you.
Is there any other public comment at this public hearing? Yes, ma'am.
Hello, Denise Doyle Schnacker, and I live in the county on Glen, which is in the city. Anyway, so I am also not opposed to the recommendation. I would strongly urge that with the momentum that was over the past year of getting this ordinance put through the system and vetted, that momentum not be lost, that it stays at the forefront of your thoughts as we get done with the Tobacco Use Prevention Kick Butts Day that you were all part of. Thank you, and that was my thought.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? Seeing none, I will close this public hearing and bring it back to the council. Any discussion from the council? No? Is there a motion to extend?
I'll move for that we waive reading by title only and adopt ordinance number 783, an extension of the interim zoning ordinance 780 of the City Council of the City of Crescent City placing a temporary prohibition on the establishment of tobacco retailers and the off-site sale of alcoholic beverage retailers.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Could you please pull the vote?
Councilmember Hawley?
Yes.
Councilmember Enscore?
Yes.
Councilmember Murray?
Yes.
Pro Temenia?
Yes.
Mayor Gasnow?
Yes. Passes unanimously. On to number 13, Hold a Public Hearing and Consider for Approval the Planning Commission's Recommendation to amend the Crescent City Municipal Code Title 17, Zoning, to Add Chapter 17.88 Concerning the Siding and Regulation of Alcohol Beverage Retailers, MCA 1501. Mr. Taylor.
So we kind of touched on this a little bit already. So this is the work that staff's put together so far. Again, as we talked about, the urgency ordinance is in place, so we have been diligently working on preparing the draft ordinance, and this one pertaining to the sale of alcoholic beverages. So being that this is a land use ordinance, we do need to look at the consistency with our general plan and our zoning code. And so I will go through that briefly, the same presentation. As, the same items, I should say that the Planning Commission has already approved, and what they did is they recommended that this be brought forward to the City Council for formal adoption. Again, this is already, went before the Planning Commission twice, two public meetings, or two public hearings, and that, the final meeting on February 12, 2015, they did make the recommendation to move this forward to the council. So I'll go through the quick analysis. Again, one of the main points of this ordinance is requiring a conditional use permit for the siding of any new alcohol retailers or the expansion of any existing facilities. So therefore, we would look at Chapter 17.54 of the City of Crescent City Municipal Code under use permits. And you have all the language there before you, so I don't think I need to read it all verbatim, but I think, kind of get the gist of it, item three there, is really to assure that such use will be placed on a site that is both suitable and adequate, and that such conforms with the general plan and will not become a nuisance to neighborhoods. So really, that's, it is conformant with the use permit requirements. That's kind of the whole idea of having these two ordinances, is to make sure that they're sited properly, that we don't have conflict with any existing businesses, and, again, they're conditional use permits, so say if there's a spot that's been proposed and it doesn't quite fit, that we can also condition that use permit to hopefully get a better fit. So it definitely is in line with the use permit requirements. And I'll move to general plan consistency, and you'll notice in the ordinance, we allow the sale of alcoholic beverages in three specific zones. These are our commercial zones. This would be the C1 Downtown Business, C2 General Commercial, and the CW, which is our Commercial Waterfront zoning districts. So we'd look at compatibility with that and consistency under the general plan, which we have the visitor and local commercial, the VLC, and the Business Professional BP zoning designations. And without reading these again verbatim, there's quite a bit of language in there. Both of these general plan land use designations allow for a wide variety of retail establishments and just kind of regional commercial, you know, trade, per se. So they're, it's definitely consistent if we're talking about the retail items, even if they are, like I said, alcoholic beverages. And we move forward to zoning code consistency, and I concluded the purpose for all three of those zoning districts, the C1, C2, and CW. And again, as you can see, they're pretty much in line and consistent with the land use designations, where they do allow a wide variety of retail establishments in most, every one of these cases, including like supermarkets and also including convenience stores, and some also allow for gas stations as well. And we do have some recommended findings. Before we get to that, though, I will skip forward now to the actual ordinance itself. So we, the Planning Commission did find and made determination that the proposed ordinance is, does conform with the general plan and the zoning code, and City Crescent City zoning code. So the proposed ordinance, Chapter 17.88, Sale of Alcoholic Beverages. And as you'll notice in the ordinance itself, there, it starts out with a purpose of intent, and really, just to sum that up, is in order to protect and preserve the public health, safety, and welfare of the city, and, of course, residents of the city. Then it moves forward to some specific definitions of, you know, what is alcohol, definitions for convenience stores, the retail stores of 3,500 square feet or less, and this will become, have a little more meaning as we go through this for some other areas. Again, definition for liquor store, on-sale alcohol and off-sale. So obviously, your off-sale is going to be like your convenience stores, your liquor stores, people can come in, purchase their alcoholic beverages, and leave. But your on-sale, it would be like your restaurants that serve alcohol, where you can come there and drink, but you're not allowed to take them off-site. That's kind of the distinguishing factors there. And the other one that's going to be a big part of this as well is the public convenience or necessity, and I will go into that a little further as we move forward. So again, as I mentioned earlier, the, really the big component of this ordinance is the review process, and it's the requirement of the conditional use permit. Currently, our zoning code allows for these types of establishments, but there is no requirement for a conditional use permit. As the council's aware, as this came up, there was some, appeared to be some, there would be some conflicts with the siding of some of these establishments with existing establishments, which didn't really seem that they would, you know, conform to each other. So therefore, that's why we added this conditional use permit requirement. And again, this means that anybody who's proposing any new sale of alcoholic beverages or the expansion of any existing would have to come before the Planning Commission for review under the use permit. And then, as you see down below there, we have a number of considerations that would have to be looked at and considered. One, list of all establishments in 1,000 feet foot radius. Two, the number of businesses having authority to sell alcoholic beverages in the census tract. Three, the extent to which crime reporting districts in which subject site is located. And four, proximity of the subject site to schools, parks, playgrounds, recreational centers, daycare, or similar uses. And of course, as the conditional use permits, we'll also look at other items as well and can add conditions onto that permit. Again, you also see in here that conditional use permits are always revocable, so if anybody violates those permits, they can be pulled. And again, under B, this is where this public convenience or necessity comes into play. Alcoholic beverage, ABC, Alcohol Beverage Control, they consider Del Norte County as a saturated community, which means we have more alcohol permits, sales permits out per the census tract. So therefore, they typically come to us and ask us to make this determination of public convenience. And really, what it comes down to is it really make the determination, one, that, I'll give you the PNC findings, where the proposed establishment will promote the city's economic health, consistent with the general plan and any applicable specific plan policies to further district purposes. Two, the applicant has not operated licensed establishments, which has been the subject of verified complaints or violations regarding alcohol, public safety, or nuisance status or regulations. Three, the police department has reported that the proposed establishment would not be expected to add to crime in the area. And four, alcoholic beverages sold by the applicant are incidental to the other products available for sale at the establishment. Again, commercial zones, D, we went over this, were allowed in the C1, C2, and CW. And another one also in here would be distance considerations. The Planning Commission may take into consideration the proximity of the proposed alcohol retail... The Planning Commission may take into consideration the proximity of the proposed alcohol retailer with parcels occupied by the following uses. Again, there's our schools, churches, hospitals, clinics, public parks, playgrounds, and residential uses. And again, it comes back to the compatibility, right? We don't want to cite, really don't want to cite, say, like a proposed liquor store, you know, next to, you know, the middle school, or in a residential neighborhood, because you, you know, you need to consider the impacts it would have on those areas. And again, revocation of use permit, there's some standard language in there. And of course, optional conditions, this means the Planning Commission can certainly add other conditions as they see fit. So those are really the use permit requirements. Now, under 17.88.040, there's standard regulations, and these just are standard regulations, are going to apply to all retailers of off-site and on-site, and there's also some special provisions for gas stations. And a lot of this stuff, I'll just say upfront, most of this is already in the state regulations and the Business Professions Code, so really, we're just pulling a lot of that and putting it in our municipal code, making folks more aware. You can go look, like I said, pretty much all of these are already there. Again, I'll just run through some of the conditions. Is it the training for employees, right, training for the state laws related to alcohol beverages, selling to minors, selling to inebriated customers, litter, the premises, they have to have, be maintained free of litter and have appropriate receptacles out there. Signage, no signs advertising the sale of alcohol beverages may be displayed outside of the store. Loitering, like the post signs for loitering, letting folks know that they can't be hanging out there, they can't be opening their 40-ouncer and drinking it out in the parking lot, it's just not allowed. And then we get to on-sale businesses, so there's going to be specific ones for on-sale and off-sale businesses. And again, I don't need to go through all of them, just I'll pull one out. The noise levels generated by the operation of such establishments would not be negatively impacted adjoining properties. Another example, alcohol must not be sold or served to any persons who are discernibly intoxicated. There's a lot of your common sense stuff, but it also gives us another tool for enforcement. And then move down to the off-sale businesses. Off-site establishment must comply with the following regulations, no sale of alcohol is allowed for on-site consumption. Alcohol must not be sold to any persons who are discernibly intoxicated. Again, a lot of this stuff is already in the Business Professionals Code. Exterior lighting, interior lighting must be sufficient to provide illumination for security and safety, and to make easily discernible the appearance and condition of persons. On-site lighting plans must be submitted for review and approval. That'd be for new establishments, but these also apply to existing. Again, the trash receptacles. And I guess I would draw your attention, again, we have some graffiti standards, those are also standards in our municipal code. But to item 14, currently in the Business Professions Code, it is known as the Lee Law, it requires, it restricts the advertising of alcoholic beverages to 33% of coverage for the window. The Planning Commission thought it was more appropriate to be a little more stringent, which obviously, you know, we can't be less stringent, but we can be more stringent, and they recommended 10% coverage. And the way we worded it actually is liquor stores and convenience stores must have glass or transparent glazing in the windows and doors. No more than 10% of any window or door area may be visibly obstructed by signs, banners, or opaque coverings of any kind, so that law enforcement personnel will have clear view of the entire public area and the premises from the public sidewalk. So it serves two purposes. It reduces the amount of advertising, and it also, it's really a safety issue for law enforcement, allows them to see clearly inside these businesses. And as I would point out, again, this is for convenience stores, so it really applies to those stores that specialize in selling, their primary sales is alcohol. So it doesn't really apply to your larger establishments, such as, you know, your grocery stores or your larger services. And again, then down to F, additional regulations for off-sale businesses that sell motor vehicle fuel and alcohol. There's things in here restricting them to only sell beer and wine, for example. No display of beer, wine, or other alcoholic beverages may be located within five feet of any building entrance or checkout counter. They can't have the open display cases, where they just have like a bunch of beers sitting on ice. And also restricts advertisement, that they're not allowed to have any advertisement of alcoholic beverages in the gas, in the island areas, where you'd be pumping for your gas. And another thing that goes through all of these different establishments would be employees selling beer and wine between the hours of 10:00 p.m. and 2:00 a.m. must be at least 21 years of age. And again, a lot of this pertains to state laws that are already in place. So that's generally the specifics of the proposed ordinance. And I would bring back to, we do make an environmental determination. As a legislative project, this amendment is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act, and then I, we cite, you know, the secret guidelines 1506, 1B3 prints. And then recommended findings, we've included those in there as well. So I'll answer any questions about the ordinance itself.
Any technical questions from the council?
No technical questions, but I wanted to publicly acknowledge a letter that is dated March 26 from Debbie Williams, the facilitator for Pathway to Tobacco-Free Community Coalition. And there's a lot of pictures that were sent, which I think helped influence the 10% of the window covering advertisements, if I'm not mistaken, for the Planning Commission's decision, where there were a number of pictures from different establishments in the community, which were blocking the visibility for law enforcement, as well as targeting our youth. And so I want to thank you for staying on top of this and helping influence public policy in the right direction, and eliminating tobacco and alcohol products from the vision of our youth, and also making it safer for our law enforcement officials. So thank you for the letter, and your hard work.
Mr. Holly?
Yeah, I do have a technical question.
Are there any current establishments that are not in the C1, C2, or C3 areas, zones?
Not to my knowledge, no. I mean, the other district would be kind of your residential professional district, which does not allow that.
Okay. And secondly, would this require establishments that are currently doing business to go out and purchase security cameras if they don't have those already?
If there's standard conditions, correct.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments from the council? I was just going to ask, as like, dovetail in there with Councilmen Holly's, is we will enforce, if this passes, current establishments to the 10% rule of the advertising. And who will enforce that?
I guess primarily it'll probably fall on our code enforcement officer. And you are correct, all the standard conditions will apply to all new and existing businesses. And again, mo, the majority of those are already in the Business Professional Codes, are already in place under state law.
And so after, after, I assume that we're going to pass this, we will get to public comment here. We will do an educational campaign to the existing businesses?
Correct. I mean, we're not, you know, obviously, we don't like to go out and just enforcement on businesses, correct. Obviously, we'll have quite a bit of a leeway on this, and give people the amount of time that they need. And one other thing I'll add to, it also restricts the outdoor advertising to 500 feet within, say, your schools, and your parks, and your playgrounds, and those specific uses.
All right. Does that also extend to billboards for alcoholic?
Billboard's not allowed in the city, so.
All right. Just want to make sure. Okay. Any other technical questions? Nope, comments? I will now open this up to public hearing. So is there any comments from the public about this alcohol regulation, alcoholic beverage retailers?
My name is Holly Went, and I'm the Prevention Program Coordinator for Delano County. I help facilitate many programs that work with youth. We see over 200 youth a week during our busy season, so we do reach for success mentoring. And Delano Youth Council, we have some of the youth council here, and I just want to speak on behalf of a lot of the youth that couldn't be here, that they feel strongly about this ordinance, about the advertising, about access, about making sure that we're not inundated with alcohol retail stores in our community. The kids, there's only so many places to spend money, and a lot of our youth go into these retailers to purchase drinks, and foods, and snacks, and they have to be exposed to all the advertising and the huge amount of alcohol that's accessible to the adults in their lives. So this is a big issue for them, and they feel strongly about it. And we want to thank the Planning Commission, and everything that they did to write this, and the 10% advertising is really a huge step forward, and we're being very progressive in Crescent City, and that's something to be proud of. So we just want to thank you for that.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment?
Yes, sir.
Jeff Wolf with the Tobacco Use Prevention Program. Again, I would like to thank Mr. Taylor and the Planning Commission. I see Holly Green is here. Thank you, Holly. Very supportive of what we're trying to do, and very supportive of reducing that window advertising, the 10%, and that's really going to benefit your police officers, and it's really going to improve the view of the city. But I'd like to ask for a little bit more, just a little bit more. I'd like you to consider reducing the amount of exterior advertising that's put on walls, poles, sandwich boards, because without, without doing that, what these retailers, or what these tobacco, alcohol, and soda companies will do to compensate for that loss, they will plaster these walls, the roofs, wherever they can, to make up for that space and put ads on the walls and stuff like that. So I want to close any loopholes that may exist. And so I'm asking you to keep that in consideration. We've all been to Walmart, you go to Walmart, very successful business, no exterior advertising whatsoever, and they're very successful in doing that. So I would just ask the council to consider reducing that type of advertising as well. Thank you again for your support and protection, children.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? Come on up.
I'm Diane from Crescent City. I'm a junior at high school and a member of Delano Youth Council.
My name is Selena. I'm the vice president of Delano Youth Council, and also a junior.
Hi, my name is Emily, and I'm a member of the Delano Youth Council, and I'm a junior at the high school.
Hi, my name is Madeline Napier. I'm the president of the Delano Youth Council and a senior in Delano High.
On behalf of Delano Youth Council and Reach for Success Mentoring, we wanted to thank you for considering the upcoming ordinance to reduce advertising of alcohol, tobacco, and unhealthy options in our community retail stores.
We appreciate you taking this stance on behalf of the children of the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Glad to see you. Is there any other public comment? All right, seeing none, I will close the public hearing on this and bring it back to the council.
Comment?
Please.
On Mr. Wolf's suggestion there, item C here's on signs, says, "No signs advertising the sale of alcoholic beverages may be displayed outside of the store." So I think that covers any signs on the outside?
That's correct.
And the same thing with the sandwich boards, they're not allowed.
Yeah, well, they're not even allowed in the city anyways, unfortunately. A lot of it comes down to enforcement, but.
It's in there for alcohol, for signs. So there'll be no signs allowed outside.
Please, come on up.
Unless we miss something else there.
I read it as just alcohol advertising. I did read it as all inclusive of tobacco, soda, alcohol. That's how I read it, was just alcohol.
I don't think any signs are allowed outside of businesses.
Well, it's an alcohol sales ordinance, so it's going to be specific to the advertisement of alcohol. So that's why we're introducing another ordinance.
We have another one coming up. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any other questions from the council? If not, I'd love to entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the recommended amendment to City Municipal Code Title 17 Zoning and add Chapter 17.88 concerning the siting and regulation of alcoholic beverage retailers, MCA 15-01, with the recommended findings.
I'll second that motion. We have a motion and a second. Could you please pull the vote?
Councilmember Holly?
Yes.
Councilmember Enscore?
Yes.
Councilmember Murray?
Yes.
Pro Temenia?
Yes.
Mayor Gasno?
Yes. All right.
Can I say one more thing?
Please.
I just want to thank the council for passing this, and I also'd like to thank the Planning Commission for their recommendation on the 10% of those windows only being covered. And a true example of that was two weeks ago in Santa Clara, which is near San Jose, where two police officers, about 1:30 in the morning, decided to take a coffee break at that convenience store, believe it was a 7-Eleven, to go in for coffee. And as they were driving into the parking lot, they noticed through the clear window that the store was being held up by a robber with a gun, who actually fired a shot at the clerk, missed, and the police officers ordered him to drop the weapon, he didn't, and they shot him. But certainly, if those windows would have been covered with advertisement, those officers may have had, when they walked in, there may have, there might have been different circumstances. So those laws and rules do work. And I wanted to thank the council and the Planning Commission for taking that action.
All right. Thank you. That was adopted unanimously, unanimously. Thank you. 14. Hold a public hearing and consider for approval the Planning Commission's recommendation to amend the Crescent City Municipal Code Title 17 Zoning to add Chapter 1787 concerning the siting and regulation of tobacco retailers. Mr. Taylor?
Again, you're all aware that there's an urgency ordinance in place. I don't need to beat a dead horse. Again, this went to the Planning Commission at the February 12 meeting, and they did recommend that this move forward to the council for adoption. So again, it's a land use regulation, so we do need to look at conformity with the zoning code and general plan. Again, we have this, pretty much the similar, the same use permit requirement, there's really not going to be much difference as far as that goes. General plan consistency, again, we're requiring, or we're limiting the sale of tobacco products to our commercial zones, which again, is the C1, C2, and CW zones, which again, allow a wide range of retail establishments. And that would be the visitor and local commercial, and the business professional land use designation. And then would bring us back to zoning code consistency, and pretty much the similar situation we just talked about. All three of those zoning designations allow for a wide variety of retail establishments. And I will, again, at this point, I will move forward to proposed ordinance, Chapter 17.87, which is the sale of tobacco products. Again, it starts out with definitions, and I think this is, for us, I think it's good timing because of the introduction of the e-cigarettes, and all the latest products have come out, we've been able to include all of those. So if you look through the definitions, they're, I think they're pretty comprehensive. Anything from, you know, what is tobacco retailer, tobacco paraphernalia is included in there, as well as, again, as you get to your, you know, it's included in there tobacco products with your e-cigarettes and all those, the new products. To move forward to 17.87.020, tobacco retail establishments. Again, the main part of this ordinance is requiring the conditional use permit for anybody who proposes to sell tobacco products, any new retail establishments, or the expansion of any existing. Again, the permit requirements, again, we talk about the zoning districts, and then B, development standards. The Planning Commission may take into consideration the proximity of the proposed tobacco retailer with parcels occupied by the following uses. Again, we have public or private kindergarten, elementary, middle, junior, or high schools, licensed child daycare facilities and preschools, public playgrounds, public licensed child daycare facilities and preschools, public playgrounds, public parks, youth or teen centers, public community centers or recreation centers, arcade, public park, public library, or houses of worship conducting youth programs or youth-oriented activities. So again, it's the only thing that entails the youth of our community. 17.87.030, I think this is an important one to have in there, then the restriction on advertising tobacco products. No person may place or maintain or cause or allow to be placed or maintained in any manner any advertising or promotion of tobacco products on an advertising display sign in a publicly visible location within 500 feet of the perimeter of an elementary or secondary school, high school, public playground, or playground area in a public park. I'll give you some different examples there, daycare center, public community center, or public library. So there's, if you think about the size of the city, roughly 1.6 square miles, I mean, 500 feet is a pretty good restriction for many of these locations. Move forward to, there's still our standard conditions in here, without going through all of them. Again, the distribution of promotional items to minors, basically it's not allowed. No self-service displays are allowed. Of course, signage, we're asking that signage be placed, the sale of tobacco products to persons under 18 years of age is prohibited by law. Photo ID is required. Again, like I said, a lot of this stuff is already adopted in the state laws. We're just kind of reinforcing it in our municipal code. Sales to minors prohibited, tobacco vending machines are prohibited, and limitation, again, it brings us back to that, retailers have to have a floor space of 3,500 square feet or less, no more than 10% allowable space for that advertisement. That's pretty much the ordinance.
Pretty much same as alcohol.
I have a question.
Sure.
On this one, I didn't see where it says you can't post anything outside of the store. That's just not allowed in the city, right? Advertising on a wall, on a store wall?
No, I'd bring you back to the, on the restrictions on advertising tobacco products. No person may place or maintain or cause or allow to be placed or maintained in any manner any advertising promotion of tobacco products on an advertising display sign in a publicly visible location within 500 feet of perimeter of any of those locations.
That answers it. Thank you.
And it's also covered under item F under advertising display sign, and it talks about billboards, freestanding signs, balloons.
Those are definitions, that's a definition though, but I understand what he's saying there. Okay, thank you.
And then, again, you have the, for the building itself, it's restricted for that window, for that 10%. And I would say we, you know, we'll see how this works out, if it becomes an issue and, you know, I guess we'll know who the, really, I hate to say it, but who the worst offenders are and if we have to come back and reword the ordinance.
Any other comments?
Only that, I notice under the development standards, it talks about where it can't happen. It has arcade there, which is fine, because I know that we were concerned at one point about the theater and having kids. I don't see theater here. I don't know if that makes any difference, because they have an arcade in that particular theater. But also, private, most of this has to do with public environments, but if you have a bowling alley where kids are bowling, or, I don't know how you interpret...
So again, it's, it all would really come back to the use permit review, right? So these are things that the Planning Commission can consider, and those are some suggestions, but the Planning Commission, under conditional use permit, can certainly take anything in consideration, like if there's a bowling alley or a movie theater, you know, they don't have to issue the use permit. Or we would place specific conditions of approval on there, really restricting how that's done.
Mr. Enscore?
I'm good.
I have just one little clarification here. So if they can do 10% of alcohol and 10% of tobacco on their windows, is that 20% or is it just 10% straight up?
10% across the board.
All right, that's, we've got to make sure that's clear in there.
You measure the window.
That's right. You've got to measure the window and definitely, so that way they, you know, hey, I can use 20% of my window for both alcohol and tobacco, which is not the case. Not in our intention.
Well, as you say, restrict it to 10%, right?
Right, but each one of these ordinance says 10% for one thing and 10% for the other. So that's what I'm, they might interpret that, I can use 20%.
Right, if you go back and look to an alcohol sales ordinance, it's really obstruct the vision.
Right.
So with any advertising.
Any advertising.
Okay.
Let me take it out.
Great.
We can look at how it was exactly worded, because we did take that into consideration.
I always try to bend the rules.
And that's true, and that's the problem, you know, sometimes you try to draft these things to cover everything.
By signs, it says no more than 10% by signs, banners, or whatever.
Correct.
Yes.
So we didn't limit it.
We didn't limit it.
And I'll be, when I was looking at this too, I looked at some other, I'll say the city of Oakland, it was one of the places we looked at, and some of these pertain also to like their check cashing locations and different kind of high, you know, profile areas that could, are susceptible to, I mean, we'll just say different types of crimes and stuff. So really, when we were thinking about that, again, it has two purposes. It reduces the amount of advertising, but it also is really law enforcement, a safety factor as well.
Okay, I think you're ready to open this up for public hearing and comment about the, concerning the citing and regulation of tobacco retailers. Do I have any public comment on this? Please.
Thank you, Jeff Wolfsburg from the Tobacco Use Prevention Program. And again, I would ask the council to consider the exterior advertising that is not on windows but actually on the exterior walls, and I will use wayside liquor as the example of the amount of advertising that they have on their wall, and that's what people see when they come into the city and that's what they see when they leave. And my concern is if there's no restrictions on window advertising, if there's a restriction on window advertising, they can then use their exterior walls to expand their advertising because there's no restriction on that. So again, I would ask the council to consider that type of advertising in this ordinance as well. And I believe the council can do that on the health and all policies that you adopted. So thank you for considering that. Also, about a year ago, we had two little girls come in here and speak to the council, and that's when you extended the moratorium. And they could not be here tonight because of medical reasons, and they really wanted to speak. So I told them that they wrote me a letter, that I would read their letter to you. So if you don't mind, I would like to do that. My name is Helena Long. I am seven years old. I go to mountain school. I like Abraham Lincoln, orange, and monkeys. I don't like cigarettes or ads in store that make kids think it's okay. It will never be okay. I don't think stores should be allowed to hang them low. Sincerely, Helena Long. And she drew a little picture here for you as well, so. And then one more. My name is Sophie Long, and I'm almost a teenager. It is not cool that people make it seem that smoking is cool, because it's not. Cigarettes control your life and wait until you're older, they can make you sick. I want to ask you, please, do not put a cigarette sign down low so little kids can see them and they're going to think it's okay. Thank you, Sophie. And I've also, you've seen the pictures of strategic placement of advertising geared towards kids, and that's what we're trying to eliminate, and I appreciate your support in doing that. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment?
Mr. Mayor, could I, perhaps I could just respond to the point about placement of advertising on exterior walls. It seems like that's not so much an alcohol or a tobacco issue as an aesthetic issue and a question of how we want our retail buildings to look in the city, and maybe, maybe the sign ordinance is the area to work on that particular problem as an aesthetic and a signage issue. And I think, quite honestly, that type of ordinance is very common among municipalities in the state. So going forward, you might want to, you know, consider asking the Planning Commission to review the sign ordinance and see if it does everything we want it to do.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Holly went with prevention programs. Again, the conversation reminded me of something that the youth had said to us. When they went around and they looked at the local retailers, they were really disappointed with some of them, especially the ones that we know are close to schools. But they were also very proud of some of the stores that we have in this community, some very responsible business owners. So they took it on as one of their goals, if the ordinance is passed, they'd like to help in educating the merchants and giving out merchant awards for those merchants that are taking it on and do some advertising and that, to put a positive twist on this, that it's something that they support and it's a good thing for the community. So I know it's a burden for some people to have to go and regulate this, but they'd like to help and put a positive twist in the beginning if possible.
Thank you. Okay, is there any other public comment? Seane, I'll bring this back to the council. Any questions?
No, I was thinking that the sign ordinance is where we could work with the outside of the buildings, because we have a lot more, we have some power in that area, because you need to get an ordinance for putting signs outside of your building. So one more little thing for you to do, Eric. I wanted to thank you, Eric, for all the hard work that you're doing on all these ordinances with the Planning Commission. They're doing a great job. And we forgot to, we were, we had agreed we were going to thank you for all the hard work on the gardenia, so thank you for that. We forgot to mention that way back and when we reported out from closed session, so all of us wanted to thank you for that, too.
Okay, any other comments? I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the Planning Commission's recommendation to amend the Crescent City Municipal Code Title 17 zoning to add Chapter 17.87 concerning the citing and regulation of tobacco retailers, MCA 15-02, 02, with the recommended findings.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Could you please pull the vote?
Councilmember Holly?
Yes.
Councilmember Enscore?
Yes.
Councilmember Murray?
Yes.
Pro Temenia?
Yes.
Mayor Gasnow?
Yes, and that passes unanimously. But wait, there's more. Now we're onto our continuing business, number 15, waive full reading and read by title only. The Introduce Ordinance Number 784 of the City Council of the City of Crescent City, adding Chapter 17.88, sale of alcoholic beverages to Title 17 zoning of the Crescent City Municipal Code. Mr. Taylor?
So you may not be familiar with this, so I'm going to go to a lengthy discussion of how we got here. Again, this is a waive the full reading, read by title only, and introduce ordinance number 784. Again, the first two hearings are about adopting the Planning Commission's recommendations, and so this is the introduction of the formal ordinance for adoption. Again, it includes some analysis. I think we've pretty much gone over the ordinance and what it entails. So again, ordinance 784 is attached to this, it has all the whereas's and of course, you know, the applicable chapter, 17.88.020. That's what we're asking for at this time.
Okay, so we're going to open it up to public comment. Is there any public comment on us now introducing ordinance number 784? I think we covered it pretty good, so I'm going to close public comment and then bring it back to the council.
I'll move that we waive the full reading by title and introduce ordinance number 784 of the City Council of the City of Crescent City, adding Chapter 17.88, sale of alcohol beverages, to Title 17 zoning of the Crescent City Municipal Code.
I'll second the motion.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Can you please pull the vote?
Councilmember Holly?
Yes.
Councilmember Enscore?
Yes.
Councilmember Murray?
Yes.
Pro Temenia?
Yes.
Mayor Gasnow?
Yes, and that passes unanimously. Okay, on to number 16, waive full reading, read by title only, and introduce ordinance number 785 of the City Council of the City of Crescent City, adding Chapter 17.87, sale of tobacco products to Title 17 zoning of the Crescent City Municipal Code. Mr. Taylor?
Again, we're just kind of the formal introduction and adoption of ordinance 785. And I will note that, you know, both of these ordinance, proposed ordinances, obviously we're asking to waive the full, the first reading. This will come back again for a second reading, then of course, there'll be a 30-day publication and noticing period after these actually take effect. So again, staff is asking, is introducing the ordinance and asking the council to introduce and adopt the ordinance.
All right, thank you. Any public comment? Seane, no public comment, bring it back to the council. Any discussion? Do I have a motion?
I'll move that we introduce ordinance number 785 of the City Council of the City of Crescent City, adding Chapter 17.87, sale of tobacco products to Title 17 zoning of the Crescent City Municipal Code.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Please pull the vote.
Councilmember Holly?
Yes.
Councilmember Enscore?
Yes.
Councilmember Murray?
Yes.
Pro Temenia?
Yes.
Mayor Gasnow?
Yes, thank you, and that passes unanimously. Okay, we are on to new business. Seventeen, consider and appoint, consider and appoint a city council representative to the last chance grade stakeholder group. Mr. Palazzo?
Yeah, Mayor Gasnow, members of the council, this is a request from Congressman Huffman to have the council appoint a city council member to a last chance grade committee. The plan is to have about, have a facilitator for these meetings, hold, host about 10 meetings. I think the first meeting's going to be an all-day meeting, the remainder of the nine meetings will be three to four hours, so they can kind of work out the questions and the issues on the location of a future roadway. Councilmember Murray is the appointment for the Transportation Commission, I believe.
Correct.
And he would ask that another member of the council be appointed besides Councilmember Murray as representing the Transportation Commission. Is that correct?
Yes, I'm the chair this year, and then next, when we appoint a new chair, then I will no longer be, so I, so it'll probably be split with the county next year, because the chair will be from the county rep. And the meeting will be May 6th, starting...
The first meeting will be May 6th, and they're going to try and host these meetings at the Washington Station Fire Hall.
I have a question. Is the interest not having more than one person from the Transportation Commission? In other words, if we sit on the Transportation Commission, would we be precluded, do you think?
No.
I don't believe so.
No.
Okay. I don't think so. Thank you. Any other questions down here? Anybody want to volunteer?
I went to the stakeholder meeting, what was it, Monday last week?
Yes.
Yeah, down in Klamath, and they just talked about it. And it is eight to 10 meetings, a couple hours each meeting, over the course of the next year, because they want to get it going pretty quick and try to get some funding sources from Caltrans. My schedule precludes me probably from being on that due to my job.
Maybe the first step is that we all have so many commission and committee assignments, is to find out when these meetings are taking place again. Could you repeat that?
The only one that has been scheduled thus far is the May 6 meeting, and then I believe that they'll be scheduling them from there on out on a regular basis, trying to get as many of the stakeholders to come to a consensus on when would be a good time to meet.
That's a Wednesday. You know our Wednesdays opened up after we moved our Delmar Solid Ways meeting.
But it's the congressman's idea or his vision to bring as many different stakeholders to the table as possible, environmental groups, business owners, the tribal representatives, and then the city and county representatives to the table, so that everybody looks at the same issues together and we will have to try and work out the best possible solution together instead of not being at the table together and before some disaster happens, so that we can all come to an agreement on the best alternate route, as opposed to having to do some kind of a reactive plan should last chance grade fail, and then we'd have to go through and try and push something through without doing a real thorough environmental study and all the other consequences of having to do something in an emergency. study and all the other consequences of having to do something in an emergency situation. So, I think it's a real proactive and really good, good idea that he has, and Caltrans has, they wanna do their, their next phase of the study within a year, so they're, they're going to be working very diligently as well. So, I, I think we're very fortunate to have the congressman leading this discussion.
Yeah, and I think that the person that's on that representing the city will be more of an observer, because we want it to go through, and mainly, it's gonna be the, I think, the tribes and the parks and whoever else has our green diamond or any other people who have property for any alternatives are gonna be really hashing it out. I mean, our, I think our view is clear that we want it to go through, so we're not dependent on last chance grade going down. So, it would basically be observing and then reporting back to the council if there's any.
Well, Mr. Mayor, if, if one of our other two representatives on the local Transportation Commission, because of their familiarity with this, would be interested in, in serving in this capacity, I certainly think that that would be fine, they represent the council as a whole, and since you've already basically precluded yourself, and I'm the only person that's not on the Transportation Commission, I have no objections whatsoever to either Mr. Holly or Mr. Aneah serving in this capacity.
All right, so that was basically saying that...
That was a good way of volunteering one of the two of them.
Exactly, very eloquent.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Enscore.
I worked on that for the whole time you were talking.
You know, when they had the community meeting here, I spoke up and was disturbed by the fact that the stakeholder, stakeholder group seemed to be so narrow when it came to the original discussions, you know? Remember when we were sitting next to each other?
I do remember that.
And, and I was concerned that, that the city and the county seemed to be left out of the equation, so I appreciate this effort that they're doing. I don't, I have commitments on Wednesday evenings, and I don't know how long these, these go.
I believe it'll be during the day.
It'll be during the day, and the first meeting, I think, will be done or completed by four.
Let me see.
Is what I've been told, if I recall.
It will be, it's quite, I'm pretty sure they'll all be during the day.
Yes.
Mr. Aneah, are you interested?
I'm joined, Mr. Holly. Feel free to go.
I would be, if, if you would like me to be there, I'd be willing, I'd be willing to go, actually, I'm very interested in this, and having just gone up last chance grade a few minutes ago, it seemed like.
Wanna make a recommendation, maybe Councilmember Enscore can be an alternate if...
That'd be great.
Yes, I like that recommendation.
Because I don't plan to ever be there.
I like that.
I, I, the main thing is, they just want us to have somebody named to be our representative. And, you know, if there is a time that I could make a meeting, I wouldn't mind doing it myself, so, you know, if somebody can't make it, we can always call somebody else on our council and get them there, but officially, we will appoint Mr. Holly.
I'm honored, thank you.
And then our alternate is Mr. Enscore.
All right.
And I'll be the fourth alternate.
There you go.
Okay. Who's the third?
I'll be the third.
There you go, Mr. Aneah has volunteered to be the third alternate.
Third alternate.
Do we need to do anything, any action on this?
I think just consensus is fine.
All right, we have consensus. Thank you. Boy, that, that lasted longer than that stakeholder meeting.
I'll get the information out to Councilmember Holly and contact Congressman Huffman's office.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, so we're on to new business, number 18, consider for approval of five-year ground lease for Tesla supercharging station with two optional five-year extensions for approximately 2,500 square feet of a city parking lot designated as APN 118-070-25. Take action as appropriate and necessary. Mr. Palazzo?
Yeah, I'd like to introduce Mr. Taylor to present this item.
Mr. Taylor?
Thank you. So, as you kind of already touched upon, Tesla Corporation contacted city staff a few months back, expressing their interest in locating a Tesla supercharging station to our community. If you're not familiar with that, the supercharging station, it's a newer charging station that facility they've come out with, it can actually charge the batteries, I believe, within 45 minutes, they can get a full charge. What Tesla would like to do is strategically locate these, I think eventually across the entire United States, right now, they have a pretty good system going up the West Coast. I think eventually, they like to have these stations located within about 100 miles of each other at the furthest distance. Right now, cars can travel, you know, 200, 200-plus miles on a single charge, so they wanna make sure they're, again, strategically located, you can drive the vehicles as far as you like. So, when they contacted us, they are actually interested in looking at several different locations. What they like to have, they want, they want something that's centrally located, that's located close to conveniences such as grocery stores, restaurants, maybe local shopping, give their customers, you know, something to do while they park their cars and they're waiting for them to charge, so, you know, they're waiting approximately 45 minutes. So, they looked at several different locations around the city, but city staff had actually showed them, again, APN 118-070-25, which is the public parking lot located between Front and K Streets, so, you know, it serves the library and some other local businesses down there. We thought it would be a great location, given the proximity to State Parks Headquarters. Also, across the street, you have the Visitor Center, and again, it's within walking distance to all our downtown conveniences, all your shopping, your restaurants, all that good stuff, and of course, Bee's Front Park. So, then we received a call back from Tesla stating that they preferred our location over their locations, so we thought that was great. It's great advertisement, one, for the city to have this, two, you know, a lot of these, more of these electric vehicles are hitting the roadways, especially in California. I believe Tesla stocks even continues to increase. And two, what they do for us by locating this here, is they put it into their computer system, and it goes to all their Tesla vehicles, you know, where these charging stations are located, we get on their website as well, let people know there's a charging station in Crescent City and what Crescent City has to offer. Again, what they're, they're asking for is a space within the public parking lot, it will consist of, their facility will consist of six charging stalls, of three of those can still be used for public parking, but three have to be expressly used just for Tesla And then it'll have an associated equipment cabinet, that's for their transformers and such, they'll have a couple of parking lot lights as well, and I have, you do have the attachment that just kind of gives you the diagram there and shows you everything that's included. That's what they're asking for, for us, is approximately 2,500 square feet, they're asking for about, would equal to about eight parking stalls, their existing stalls, little land, area for landscaping, and some additional square footage for ADA access. And again, I've attached an aerial photograph with the staff report depicting the location. We'll kind of, I think we'll still work out the specific location within that general area is still to be seen. One of the biggest obstacles is gonna be the location of the power and where it's gonna come in from. I know they indicated there's an existing facility, they're in the parking lot, but it may also come from across the street, we don't know the real specifics at this time. And that is reflected in the lease agreement itself, as you see, the lease under the, at the end of it, under the depiction, I mean, it just, basically, a standard language is stating that, you know, the premise is comprised of what they're asking for, the 2,500 square feet for the charging stalls and the equipment cabinet. And again, it's for a five-year lease, and it has two five-year extensions if they choose to take them. Tesla is responsible for installing the station, so they will bear the cost of all the installation of this facility, and in return, I think the rent is the amount of $1 a year. Again, there's, obviously, as I stated, there's many benefits for the city for locating this charging station in Crescent City, and having it at that location down there, it's a prime location within the city. So, I can answer any questions you have about the facility itself or the terms of the lease agreement, if you have any.
Technical questions?
I, I didn't see in the lease agreement or the recital that they were going to let us have a car, a Tesla car, so that we could make sure that the charger's working properly.
Actually, that's one sports car, and that goes to staff.
I, you know, I think this is great. My only concern is during big events, mainly the Fourth of July, when we've had some parking issues down there in the past, and we're gonna now take up these spaces with the charging stations, and I assume we won't allow anyone to park in those.
As I indicated, right, though, so, we'll be, technically, we'll be losing about five spaces, two to the actual construction, and three to specifically Tesla vehicles, but the other three spots will be open for public parking. So, they'll have six charging stalls, three of them specifically for their use, and three of them that are still allowed for public parking, is what they're asking for. So, technically, we're losing about five spaces total, that, I went down and did a quick count, I think there's over, there's at least 124 parking stalls down there, and for the exception of having some of the events like the Fourth of July, it's fairly underutilized, you can go down any time during the day, I would say less than half that parking lot is actually used.
It's like people don't even know that parking lot exists, so, and it's a good spot. And also, anybody who's driving a Tesla is pretty well off, and they might be spending and dropping some good coin in our community, so.
That's where we have our farmer's market, too, right?
Well, it's on the front part.
On Wednesday?
Yeah, so.
But that is correct, they have it on Wednesday down there, but I don't think this is gonna interrupt what they'd like to do down there.
No.
There's a lot of tourists that hit that farmer's market, so.
Correct.
Yeah.
Well, you know, once they see that Tesla charging station's there, they might start considering having a Tesla. Okay, I'm gonna open this up to public comment, is there any public comment on Tesla's plans to put charging stations here in Crescent City? Seeing no public comment, now I'll close it.
Add one real quick thing, sorry. So, what we're asking is for the council to approve the lease agreement and the use of the public property, but they'll still have to come back to the Planning Commission for the actual site plan architectural review, and then, of course, submitting their building permits and all that good stuff.
Right, how, how long do you think that process is gonna take?
You know, it's really up to them. I mean, if this gets approved tonight, then it's up to them to get us those plans, and, you know, we always have at least a 30-day turnaround or less, so.
Okay. Yeah, I just wanna make another comment, that I was over at Mountain Chasta at a training when I was at RHS, and there was a Tesla charging station there, and you think of all the little small towns that there are, but they, they wanna make sure that they have a good network going up and down.
What I found interesting, when they get to some of the more remote locations, like kind of your desert communities, they actually are locating these at gas stations, so you'll have a gas station with the Tesla charging station at some of these spots.
They're in the forefront. Okay, any other questions for Eric? What action do we have to do, just have to approve this?
One more, I'm sorry, one more question.
Sure.
Is, I haven't done the math, but is it really 2,500 square feet? Is it gonna take up that much?
Approximately, I mean, I mapped it out on our aerial photo in our ArcView, so it's roughly 2,500 square feet.
It just seems like a lot of square footage for a few parking spaces.
Yeah, when you get the eight stalls plus the additional landscaping area, it's, it may be less, it may be a little more, it's approximate.
Yeah, it's really not that much in that whole area. I learned that an acre is over 40,000 square feet.
Mayor?
Mayor?
Yes, sorry.
Yeah, Attorney, Mr. Black brought up a good point, do you wanna address it?
I was just wondering if there's a requirement that they do the actual development within a set period of time, in other words, they don't just have control of the leased property, and then the project itself lags?
Yeah. Yeah, I, I think it would be a good idea to add a clause that says that they have to, for the lease to continue, they have to actually develop the charging station within three years, and nothing prohibits us talking to them again and extending that, but if there's some good reason for it.
Put that clause in this...
They do have a commencement date in there, I don't know if you see that, on eight, commencement date, the term shall commence on the date that the supercharging station is open to the public, which shall not be later than 365 days following the possession date.
Oh, perfect, that, that does the same thing.
All right.
Yeah, that's better.
Clarification. All right, any other comments, questions? Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve a five-year ground lease for Tesla's supercharging station with two optional five-year extensions for approximately 2,500 square feet of a city parking lot designated as APN number 118-070-25, and take action on that.
Second. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second, please pull the vote.
Councilmember Holly?
Yes.
Councilmember Enscore?
Yes.
Councilmember Murray?
Yes.
Pro Temenia?
Yes.
Mayor Gasnow?
Yes, thank you unanimously voted in. Okay, we are on number 19, consider and approve and authorize the mayor to sign the attached memorandum of understanding between the City of Crescent City and the Elk Valley Rancheria California for potable water wheeling and wastewater services.
Are we talking about the Tesla agreement?
Yeah. Mr. Black or Mr. Palazzo?
I'm sorry, we were, we're talking about who's gonna sign the Tesla agreement.
I just realized that in the motion, it didn't specifically authorize the city manager to sign, so I was conferring with Mr. Black if that was, the motion was adequate for me to sign.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I think it is because the agreement that you approved does, in fact, designate you at the end, so we'll take that as part of it, as part of the approval of the document.
Good point.
Thank you.
All right. So, so, so that's okay. I wanna make sure I cross our Ts and dot our Is. We're on number 19, memorandum of understanding between the City of Crescent City and the rancheria.
Yeah, and Mayor Gasnow members of the council, and have Mr. Black introduce this item.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this agreement has been developed over a period of time, it's evolved somewhat as the Elk Valley Rancheria Martin Ranch project has evolved, and at this stage of the planning for this facility, the rancheria has indicated they want to essentially go in a phased basis. Phase one would be essentially closing down the Holland Hill Casino that exists today, and relocating a casino of very, very similar size, allocation of different kinds of facilities and operations, very similar to what's existing at Holland Hill. In talking to the tribe, they need to have two things in place that are critical for them before they can really proceed to take concrete steps and build a new casino on the Martin Ranch, and one of them is how are they gonna get water, and the second one is how are they gonna dispose of sewage? So, those are, those are critical questions, and they have worked with the city, because we are the community provider of both water and wastewater treatment, and we have had, I think, a very productive dialogue. So, those are, those are the two key questions that are answered by this agreement, but another one that was of importance to them, if they were gonna close down the Holland Hill facility and no longer make use of water services and wastewater treatment services to the same extent at that site, would they be allowed to transfer some of their capacity charges that they previously paid for over to the Martin Ranch facility? This is a policy question for your council, I think staff, staff's recommendation is that they be allowed to transfer the net single-family equivalents over to the Martin Ranch, based on an analysis of what was paid for back in the 90s, and how many single-family equivalents need to remain at the Holland Hill site. We're recommending that there are six net SFEs that can transfer over. The casino, when it's built, will utilize, by our analysis and by consensus with the county, they make the same analysis, they will utilize 27 SFEs. So, the, the tribe will be paying for 21 additional SFEs, both on the wastewater treatment side and on the water provision side. The tribe will deal separately... The tribe will deal separately with the county and the county services area for sewer, sewage collection facilities because the county owns and operates the pipes that collect wastewater at the Martin Ranch or when they're sufficiently extended, they'll collect wastewater at the Martin Ranch. So there are a number of other topics in this agreement that are touched on. One of them that might be of interest is the concept of wheeling the water. The Birch Ocean View Community Services District owns pipes that lead or bring water very close to and in fact, to a limited extent, onto the Martin Ranch. This concept before you would essentially approve wheeling the water through those pipes. And physically speaking, physically speaking, that is absolutely identical to what would happen if this agreement were written between the tribe and the Birch Ocean View CSD. The water would essentially be wheeled through their, through their pipes. In this case, the city would be the delivery entity that brings the water to the Martin Ranch. And as I explained in the staff memo, in a way, the city has no dog in that particular game. We just are willing to work with the tribe because they've been willing to work with us. As far as the amount of capacity charges that the tribe would pay, those amounts are identical regardless of from whom they actually receive the water, identical as to what the city would receive. I think working with the city is perhaps just a little bit cheaper for the tribe. So if you have any questions, I will say that this question of delivering utility services to the Martin Ranch is a very longstanding question. I think I've been attending meetings at the tribe or with tribal representatives with at least four different city managers in tow, a couple of different public works directors. So, you know, it's a, it's a good, it's been a good dialogue, but it's probably at this point important to resolve the question and allow the tribe to move forward.
Thank you.
I also, I just note that Bobby McRae is in the audience. She is the manager of the tribe's gaming facilities and may wish to add some cheery notes to mine.
She says no.
No, okay.
Okay, is there any council questions for Mr. Black? Now, I'm going to open this up to public comment. Is there any public comment about us wheeling water through? Seeing no public comment, I'll close public comment. Bring it back to the council. Any further discussion or do I hear a motion?
Yeah, I'd just like to say that we had hoped, I think, to have two-by-two meetings with both the tribe and the, and the Birch Ocean View District. And that wasn't, I guess, received in a, in a positive way as far as having those meetings because we hadn't had that discussion for a few years. But I don't know if people aren't willing to come to the table. I think we, we probably need to move forward.
I was told that a decision was made not to designate a two-member group, two-member subcommittee, ad hoc committee to meet. At this time, I wasn't told that it would never happen. I wasn't told that it was completely ruled out. It was just declined for the time being. So as I point out, there's nothing in your adoption of this that prohibits or even inhibits, I don't think, dialogue that may occur between the tribe and Birch Ocean View. This is, this is an alternative. It's one of two major alternatives, but it's not preclusive. And since we don't, we get, we provide the same service, we get the same revenues, no matter how that question is resolved, we think this helps, we think this helps the tribe, it helps the project, which by the way, is a significant economic force in our community and it's important to, to exist. So we, we think it's consistent with city policy to be helpful in that way.
I'd just like to make a comment too, following on council members. Hawley, I don't think I've ever had a district that was unwilling to meet in a two-by-two with the city council. And this has gone on for years and years and years. And I remember six or seven years ago, when I was on the council, I had a two-by-two with them and the, and the tribe to try to resolve this six or seven years ago. I think you were there, Mr. Black. And nothing got resolved at that time and it was moved on six years later. In fact, I don't even know why the Birch Ocean View District exists. I don't think there's any reason for that district to exist. It's just another layer of government that we don't need. And that's my opinion and I have no idea why they're in existence other than they're paying off a bond that it'll be ending in two years and there's no other reason for that district to exist. But to refuse to meet and talk about this is absolutely ridiculous. The tribe needs to move on. They create jobs for our community and we need to move on with this. That's my comment.
Thank you. Okay, there's no other comments? I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve a memorandum of understanding between the City of Crescent City and the Elk Valley Rancheria for potable water wheeling and wastewater services.
A second. All right. We have a motion and a second. Please pull the vote.
Councilmember Hawley?
Yes.
Councilmember Enscore?
Yes.
Councilmember Murray?
Yes.
Pro Temenia?
Yes.
Mayor Gasno?
Yes, and I will sign that memorandum, memorandum of understanding. Okay, on to number 20 of our new business. I'm going to have some different wording here. Consider and prove the city manager to prepare an application for cycle two of the active transportation program ATP funding for the completion of a class one pedestrian trail adjacent to Sunset Circle for the city. Mr. Palazzo.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Weir, our public works director, will present this item.
Mr. Weir, been pretty quiet back there.
Is his microphone on? So now I can put my microphone on so everybody can hear you at home.
Ah, thank you very much. Yeah, so what's before the council tonight is to request the local transportation commission to prepare an application for cycle two of the active transportation program funding to complete a class one pedestrian trail along Sunset Circle. This funding is the active transportation funding. That is a funding source that's designed to promote active transportation. The city submitted an application for cycle one last year in regard to Front Street. We're currently looking at that again to submit another application as we were not successful with that. This particular project is a project that goes along with previous topics tonight. Previous topic tonight was the harbor and their tsunami research center that they were proposing. They talked about the crescent and the harbor through the Sunset Circle area to the beachfront park area as being that crescent. Currently with the harbor trail that they completed and the harbor being complete and the Harbor Trail North segment that the city completed back in 2008, there remains a gap in this trail. And it's pretty obvious if you walk that particular portion of the trail, that gap is along Sunset Circle. So what this project application would do is it would, it would, it would bridge that gap. It would allow there to be a complete class one trail, which is a dedicated at least 10-foot wide trail along Sunset Circle for bicycles and pedestrians. And that would be able to take you on basically from Battery Point Lighthouse along the How Drive portion of the beachfront park, along through the somewhat recently completed city portion of the harbor trail, through this new portion to the harbors, new portion. So to do this, it is going to go before the local transportation commission here on Thursday and they would be proposed to hire the Echelon Transportation Group. And the Echelon Transportation Group would put together a project study report equivalent, basically a concept design with an estimate and complete the application for this funding. Included in the staff packet is a vicinity map of the project, which shows this portion of the trail being completed. So with that, that's the, that's a report. Executive Director of the Transportation Commission, Tamara Layton, is here as well. If there's any technical questions for her.
And just to add to what Mr. Weir was saying is we had a very good meeting with Charlie Helms from the harbor, you know, myself, Mr. Weir, Ms. Layton, the county, and president with the county was Mr. Serena, county CIO, and Heidi Kuntzle, Community Development Department, talking about, you know, submitting this application and working together to make this happen. So all the players are on board in making, you know, this application and connecting and completing that connectivity for this trail.
That's a good, good point. As, you know, one, one obstacle, so to speak, in the way of this particular portion has always been that the city doesn't have a designated right-of-way through this area. And so that's where we had to bring all the, all the players together and make sure this was going to be at least a jointly supported project in which at that meeting, it was stated it would be jointly supported. It's anticipated that to complete this project, there would be some right-of-way acquisition as well, as there currently isn't enough street right-of-way to support this class one trail as well. But all that would come back to the council once the concept design and application is complete for your official approval.
All right. Any questions for Eric? All right, I want to open this up to public comment. Is there any public comment on bridging the gap on the coastal trail? Seeing no public comment, we'll bring it back to the council. Discussion.
At long last.
Oh yeah, I walk that all the time. Best thing to do is I take a car down the harbor, drive back, walk down there, walk the whole trail, get lunch at, or brunch at the grotto or one of the restaurants down there and then drive the car back. So it's a good one. Definitely, you get kind of lost, right, when you get there to Sunset Circle. It's like the world ends right there. You don't know where you're going. So, okay, do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to, it's different, it's worded differently.
Yeah, they need to prepare an application.
For the city manager to submit an application. Go with the wording that's in the staff report.
In the staff report.
In the staff.
So consider and request the local transportation commission to prepare an application for cycle two of the active transportation program funding for the completion of a class one pedestrian trail adjacent to Sunset Circle for the city. Thank you, Tamara Layton.
Second. Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Please pull the vote.
Councilmember Hawley?
Yes.
Councilmember Enscore?
Yes.
Councilmember Murray?
Yes.
Pro Temenia?
Yes.
Mayor Gasno?
Yes, thank you. Okay, that takes us to the end of our agenda items and now we're on to city council items. Legislative matters, Mr. Palazzo.
Yeah, Mayor, members of council, I have two legislative items on the agenda this evening in form of letters and they're both requests from outside parties. The first one is a letter of support for Small Business Technical Assistance Act. And this was requested by Amber Weir, who's working at the SBDC. I took actually both of these, requested on your agenda and submitted them to the League of California Cities to ask for their input and where their support is, you know, with these letters. On, A, for the business technical assistance, they are in support of that and certainly would recommend that we send a letter of support in on that topic. The second letter is a letter of support for the Smith River watershed resolution. And this was a request by our Senator Maguire. And again, it's a kind of a, it's a state, a joint state resolution going to, I believe, either Oregon or the federal government. Let me go back and take a look at the letter again.
I think it urges the Congress and the President.
It's the Congress and the President, thank you. And the league doesn't have a position on that, but they certainly understand, you know, that impacts, you know, our area and they don't, definitely don't oppose it, you know, for that support. It is something that the county board of supervisors has signed a letter in support of. And I've had that looked at, you know, by our staff and our city attorney. So we don't see any, any, you know, reason not to support this and send that off.
All right. Any comments from the council?
No, I checked with our league representative Sarah Rounds on the, the Small Business Technical Assistance Act and she, she said that they just hadn't come out publicly on that. And I'm certainly thankful to Senator Maguire for the watershed, watershed resolution on the Smith River. I'm very grateful that he's taken this to the national level. I think it's really critical for our water safety and all the other reasons that he cited.
And I definitely think that if, if the mission, the O mission of the city on supporting this would be a bigger exclamation on we don't care kind of thing than if we weren't on there. So definitely, my recommendation is to do it. Yeah, so do we need consensus?
Pardon me, consensus of the council for the mayor to sign these two letters in support?
Yes.
Thank you.
So say they, so let it be done.
Okay.
Thank you.
I have no other legislative matters. A lot of, a lot of things going on at the state at this point and so I'm sure there's others that, you know, other things that may come up.
Okay, so now we're on to our city manager report.
Yeah, city manager report, I have one discussion item that is included in your packet and I did follow that up by an email with questions. I received a phone call from Grant Warshol requesting, from the Smith River Alliance requesting that the mayor or council member be available for an interview. And it's a PBS show interview and it's actually tomorrow, I believe, around three or four o'clock. This is something that is, you know, I think raises the level of, you know, really getting a consensus from all council members that we, you know, want to proceed with an interview like this. You know, this is a, a topic that, you know, has had some controversy and some, you know, kind of positioning around. We have submitted, you know, some letters, you know, to the state and, you know, really kind of cautiously, moving cautiously, you know, with, you know, the future of mining or potential future mining along the Smith River. I don't know a lot of details about this PBS show or how that, that's going to be portrayed. So, you know, that's something that I just kind of caution the council about. On the other side, it is, you know, some opportunity to get, you know, our name, Crescent City, out to, out to the nation.
Council discussion. So if it's round three or four, it almost precludes me again because of, I don't get out of school till 3:10. So as usual, I, I pass the buck to the mayor, Pro Tem.
Personally, I would say thanks, but no thanks. I'm reading some of these questions, like question five, is there a current threat to this area? There is no current threat. That permit was withdrawn for the strip mining. What's the most, number six, what is the single most important action that you should address this threat? Once again, I don't see a threat. Number seven, if you could tell the Obama administration or Congress one thing about this place that needs to be done, what would you say? You know, those are questions that are so open-ended and they don't reflect the entire opinion of the, I don't know how they could unless we have a council vote on every one of those questions. I don't see a need to, to go on PBS to talk about this stuff. That's my opinion.
Yeah, I would think that, you know, just giving them a unified statement where we're just trying to protect our water, you know, our drinking water situation and we've already addressed it through letters of support, including the one Senator Maguire. So I don't know if we want to do a consensus and direct staff to just put together sort of a blanket press release statement on our position of protecting our drinking water.
There's a lot of, that we've already said in previous letters and we can provide those letters to, you know, the PBS.
Exactly.
That is, that is the public, you know, information that's out there at this point.
Sure, and that's where I direct them to. Because I think we're not inclined to be interviewed, especially for maybe the slant of these questions, because they're looking for an environmental impact story.
Just an observation, and, and I'm not disagreeing that maybe this is not the, not the best place for us to weigh in. the best place for us to weigh in, but we just did weigh in. I mean, the very last statement in the resolution that we just had consensus on, in essence, said that anything that affects the environment, we're against. So we, we just took a position by consensus. So, and that's just an observation. I'm not saying that we should or shouldn't get interviewed, but in essence, we, we answered these questions with that resolution by, in consensus, saying that we're going to sign a letter saying that we're in favor of this. So to, to duck it now from PBS is sort of counterproductive, because we already took our stand. And again, I'm not saying we should go and be interviewed. I just want to make the observation that we, we did take a position.
Right.
On, on, on these questions, because if you look, if you read the entire resolution, much of this, these questions are based on that. So, it's just.
And I think that's what we're just trying to reiterate with the, the letters and the comments we did, but we just didn't want to get into a situation where, you know, one of us might be taken out of context.
If I might interject, the interview's not until April 7th.
It's tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
Oh, it is tomorrow.
It's tomorrow.
How time flies.
I was the one that was on vacation for a week, so. Okay, so our consensus is direct them to all of the other printed documents and letters that we have stating that our goal is to protect our drinking water through the actions that we just did.
Okay.
Will do.
Okay. Okay, on to reports concerned referrals from the council and travel. Who wants to go first? Enscore?
All right. Since our last meeting, I attended the lead-in awards ceremony, along with other members of the council and staff, was with the rest of the council at the kickbutts day, with the, all the young people coming with their posters and so forth, and that was awesome at City Hall. Had a bid two-by-two meeting, and then attended their regular board meeting, had a regular LAFCO meeting in April, attended the tsunami kiosk dedication that our mayor did a fine job with. And this past week, had an opportunity to tour our, our police station with our new police chief and see the work he's doing down there. Great work. Got to do a ride-along with two of our fine officers, got to see the process of seeing somebody arrested and go through the booking process, and so I'm a little bit more familiar about the work that they have to do in doing that, and certainly appreciate that. Was extended an invitation to, to come and see their work whenever I can, and so, Chief, appreciate so much the work you're doing here, and it was, it was a great opportunity to, to be able to, to see you guys at, at work. Appreciate it very much.
Thank you. You're working well. You're working well.
Thank you. That's all I got.
All right, Mr. Enia.
Well, I also attended the, the lead-in awards and also the tobacco. It was nice seeing those kids for the kickbacks.
Yeah.
Not today. Well, I also went to LAFCO and the kiosk for, for Mayor Gastel. Also attended the, the fire burn for the house the fire department did, and Mr. Enscore did that also. And that's about it.
Mr. Holly. Okay, I did attend a special meeting of Altico on, on the 17th. Solid Waste Management Authority, also on the 17th. The lead-in awards at the cultural center, which we've already talked about. Spent just a few minutes at the A Street burn. Got pretty smoky and decided to go home. Washed my suit.
If you'd put on a, if you'd join me with a turnout gear, you wouldn't have to worry about your suit.
Yeah, you're right. Next time.
All right.
The, the tobacco march was, was particularly inspiring, I think. Those kids were so well behaved, and they were busy with ladybugs, but that was okay. And the Tri-Agency met on the 25th, and things are moving forward with Tri-Agency in a number of areas, and it's, it's nice to see. Tri-Agency is starting to work again, and so that, that's encouraging. And also had a meeting of the Delmart Senior Center. So, thank you. All right. Ms. Murray.
The Tobacco Cessation Group, they had expanded it to, I think there were five different schools, including Smith River came to tell us thank you, and, and it was really a terrific afternoon. So I want to thank all the schools and all the teachers and the adults that chaperoned them to join us in that. And then I missed the lead-in ceremonies, I was out of town, but I attended the Redwood Empire Division meeting, the first one of the year. We had, we meet on a quarterly basis down in Culverdale. It's a really cute little town. I really enjoyed my, my experience down there, just visiting their town. We had a really good program, which was provided by Michael Coleman. He's a fiscal advisor for the League of California Cities, and the topic was modernizing our tax system and the latest from Sacramento. And you can check that out on the league website. I really encourage all of our council members and our city manager to review that presentation. It was very, very eye-opening. We also had our league president, Stephanie Aguilara, be at that meeting, which we've never had a league president be at one of our division meetings before, and we had Senator Maguire and Assembly Member Wood there for the reception. So that was a real good opportunity for everyone to network with, with all of them. And we, we amend our bylaws on an annual basis after we review them at the executive level. And I want to bring this up again. We've talked about it in the past, and I'd like to, in our bylaws, we have a section, it's Article 8, where we can send letters either pro or con for supporting different, different pieces of legislation without having to have it go through the entire council. And if you look at that section, at Article 8 in the bylaws, it's, it's not really giving us license to just one person just saying yea or nay on something, and it's really would give us a lot more muscle for our city in weighing in on some of these bills as they go through the legislation, legislator, and, bless you, and so I think it would behoove us to check it out. All of the letters go, and we can do it online. So all of the letters go through our league representative, Sarah, and she can kick it back and say, this is, doesn't make sense, or, and, and there's also sample letters that we can use, and we can also put our own city logo on, on the letterhead and everything. So I'm encouraging you to look at that again and consider it, and they're very easy to send. So that was, that was the vision meeting, and then, so I'll get, let's see. We had a local coastal cities, counties conference call with coastal commissioners, and we're talking about sea level rise and the local coastal plans, and that was on the 25th. And then on the 27th, I went to the Smith River Rancheria for the Delmore Economic Development Corporation's luncheon, and that was very interesting. And then we had the tsunami kiosk kickoff, which was attended very well, and our mayor did a fine job of presenting. And then later that afternoon, I went and checked out Brother Jonathan Park, where volunteers Alan Justice and a woman named Joanne showed us how to spot the gray whales, and there were 17 recorded that day when I was there. So that was pretty nice, and I just wanted to acknowledge the volunteers for the work that they did all through the month of March. And then on the 30th, we had the, the last, la, the meeting in Clamath with Congressman Huffman for Last Chance Grade. And that was the launch of the stakeholders group that we discussed, where Councilmember Holly readily agreed to volunteer to be our stakeholder representative. And then we had a, let's see, I think that was, oh, you know, I went swimming at the swimming pool for the first time in a long time since it's been redone, and it was, it was really, really nice. So I just wanted to mention how, how wonderful our swimming pool was, and it was quite a joy to use, so. And then we have a really busy week this week. We have the, Panera is going to be showing their new plane, and then we have the dog park meeting, and we also have airport meeting, and we have the economic summit on Friday. So I hope some are going to enjoy some of those different activities. That's it.
A lot of good stuff. That's what happens when we have extra week in our month.
Yeah.
Let's see, was it solid waste meeting? Lead-in awards were great. I had to leave after the city got their awards, but I had another meeting to go to. Kick butt day was very good with the kids, see them, bid two-by-two. Let's see, did the bid board meeting with Enscore. And then the tsunami kiosk dedication, I want to thank the city staff again for doing such a great job of getting it together, and also the public work staff for getting in the ground. They're beautiful. And, you know, we had a flag that was being stolen off of one of the kiosks, and a visitor from out of town stopped the person, got it back from them, and then gave it to the, to the chamber. And so we got the flag back. Almost lasted a whole week without getting those things ripped off, so. I'm sure, Eric, the guys down at the yard are sitting there, how can we secure these a lot better?
Jason Borges is on it. He was already thinking about that.
I'm sure he was upset as much as I was.
He was really upset, so. But, you know, thank you for all the work that you put into that. You know, what a great, you know, asset to this community and education, you know, for our locals and tourists alike on this kiosk.
Sure, I can say it was a pleasure to work on now, now that I'm done with it.
It was a lot.
For now, there'll be additions. And the great thing about it is that it is, has an online component that can be expanded in the future, so that's a good thing. And what do we have coming up? I think that was it for me, and I had a great spring break, my first week off as a teacher. Well, I had Christmas off too, but it was awesome. And I did go to the stakeholders meeting. Couldn't get anybody else to go for me, so I had to, had to represent, so I went.
Just another plug for our dog park meeting.
Oh, yes.
Wednesday at 5:30? 5:30 to 7:00?
5:30. Where's it going to be held?
Wastewater Treatment.
Wastewater Treatment Plant, great. So everybody come out for that, who's interested in a dog park. Remember, we do have our donation silos, so if you do like the dog park ideas, please donate to Crescent City, stacks deductible, and if we get matching funds, we can get bigger grants to help with that. Okay, I think that does it for our agenda and this meeting here. We will now, geez, I have to go on to page five of our agenda here. We'll adjourn to April 20th, 2015, at 5:00 p.m., and I'll see everybody there.